If you would, if you would leave. If you leave, it's gonna take a second.
You have the following, thank you Lord for being with us. Thank you dear Lord for allowing us to arrive at this destination. Father God, help us to be able to listen and to be able to make decisions with regards to the town of Salas City and its citizens. Father, even other weapons I have.
If you would, would you please lead? I would lead instead of I, I'm the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Commissioner Brown, if you would, would you recite the Salas City Vision Statement?
To advance a framework for our success through balanced government, dynamic partnerships, and an engaged community.
And Commissioner Underwood, if you would, would you recite the Salas City Vision Statement?
Yes, sir. Salas City is a safe, prosperous, and vibrant community where diversity, innovation, and education drive success in a globally competitive society.
Right, thank you. All right. Adjustments to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Sit again. All those who favor the aye. All right. You see an agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the same agenda.
I'd like to move three point four of the Sharp Patel fiscal year 2021 audit to the agenda. I think we need to discuss that.
Regular agenda?
Yes.
Three point four?
Yes, sir.
We had some time over there. I'm not, okay. If you just may not remove that to review.
Is it, can you put under the new business? Would that be under old business?
It might be under old.
Be under old business?
Well, I have this contract.
So, well then, we need to go back and make a a motion to approve that agenda adjustment?
Motion to approve the adjusted.
Got any other motion? And second, amend the agenda in discussion. All those who favor say aye. All those who vote aye side.
And a new motion to approve the new consent agenda?
Yes, I see that, yeah. With that, yes. Yeah, you're right.
So much.
Got a motion, second, to approve the new amended consent agenda. Thank you, dear Lord.
Yes, sir.
All those who favor say aye. All those who vote aye side. That carries. Next on the list is accreditation.
Well, I want to recognize a couple of new staff members we have with us tonight. We have Stan here, a year, second. She's recently joined us as our new student planner, replacing Donald Moore. And we have Tyler Fessin here, who's our new parts of recreation director. We're delighted to have them aboard the team. They're doing great work. Have them for Salas City.
Anything else?
That's all, man.
All right, we'll move on to old business. Three point four, Sharp Patel. Next.
Four, six, forty seven. Well, contract six forty seven. So if I have a play on concern agenda, because they obviously additional work that I've been behind for our audit duty staff needs. So that the completion of the audit, they sent us a modified contract that increased the original three to a modified, who changed, well, we've only been increased ten thousand for for Salas City, but they're already at the top. That's what we need, that's something we'd have to do.
We, so we've already, they've already provided you service?
They've already provided service.
And with the, the the checker box is there with the reasons for the increase?
Yes. And, and this is typical. The reason it's done this way is they don't know what the modification to be with the B and D, Lord has completed. That's what they, God will ask. You know, this is part of the twenty one, the twenty one. Twenty one audit isn't the least. That's why the order wasn't available to come tonight. That was my preference, but we're gonna try and get it here as soon as possible when we have a schedule meeting.
Then we do the next meeting.
That's what we're shooting for. It's just depending on, doesn't affect our work on twenty two.
This, their schedule?
How far along twenty two?
Pretty, pretty deep in twenty two. The major factors, the bank reconciliation, which we are three quarters of the way through. So each one would all look faster.
So we're through here, and like I said, bank reconciliation is probably the biggest thing that they've done. And we say we're, where are we, twenty two, twenty two? Bank reconciliation?
Right, bank reconciliation, right. We're about three quarters of the way through reconciliation. FY twenty two. This is what all this, one, no, it's fiscal year, so if you put your own March, April timeframe.
All right. Well, another question I have. In us doing this, didn't we have to hire some temporary folks to help do this? We did. How many did we hire?
How many did we hire? We hired, we hired all. We had two individuals now, and one did leave, and we had, and they brought, sent us another person. So we've had three individuals work with Robert Haff and two positions.
And how, do you have an idea how much can you spend on this digital ramp up?
Well, it, it, it changes. I think we're around very valid right now. There was an hour already until they just spend on, what the time is they have to put into the work.
But then that's a group, we, that's what I need to do right now. No, we spent thirty thousand on these two things, right?
Right.
Right. So the simple math, we could spend another forty some thousand on audit. But we got none years ago.
And I'll say, part of the challenge was for FY twenty one, that's made this go all so long is that it's a federal buyer. We know about the reconciliation issue. There, there was also one reconciliation done over the entire fiscal year that was also done incorrectly. The auditor wrote a financial statement based on the incorrect reconciliation. Created more work for our staff and for the raw that happening. They have to try and back our numbers into a, a core reconciliation work. So it did take a lot longer. Stuff was not entered into the ledger correctly. We had wrong entries, so there was numerous issues that had to be corrected. And, and still being corrected for, but that's every, every step we take towards current date, the problem to lessen because we have less of those, those irregularities. But I mean, you're talking about timeframe line, you're talking about July twenty twenty to June twenty twenty one. So you, you don't have any staff that was involved in this, doing this financial year that works for the town anymore, nobody. So you're, that makes it, you have the digital challenges, you're correcting mistakes of our employees, not current employees.
Correct me if I'm wrong, with the audit. Audit gets completed until it's presented by the auditor, right?
That's correct.
So essentially, this twenty one audit, we might be, even though we heard that it's going under whatever, whatever, we've heard that a couple times. It won't be officially, go all.
Assuming they present it, yes, but that doesn't stop our work.
I did think we could go on to the next audit until we got three of these things done.
When you do the back end work, you're like, you can't complete the twenty two audit of the twenty one audit. That's correct. But certainly things I reconciliation were, if it's true, if it's done correctly, if you do that, maybe that.
Are the two previous finance directors in the book here helping? Are they not helping at all? Tina and Roy.
Not Tina, we have not used Tina at any point. Roy has been very helpful down there, and getting us the twenty one audit completed. That includes work that if he would have been involved, if he was town manager, and I'd say past the twenty one audit, I don't think it would be nearly as helpful, but he has been very helpful working with our finance director on several occasions on his current, his audit. He's probably been in the town all a dozen times. All within the system.
One thing sort of really concerned me about the whole thing is the name reconciliation part. Well, simply terms, that's, if you think about it, you don't work with the finance, I know it's different. It's like not balancing your check, or knowing how much money you got in that span, it's sort of good. Oh, yeah, I got that, that's how it is. It's sort of concerning. Sort of wondering how to know what we're doing sometimes. Financial, right.
And that's going back, like I said before, in current segments involved, we're just having to play that the mess that we all inherited. But saying that, there are ways, and there's efforts that we can want to take to make sure that we don't hang on this finance up in this position again, and that's why you have the recommendation on the agenda of finding a new business. But there's nothing we can do to do that, because what we all inherited, other than identify the problem where we're with it. As far as making sure that there's my issues with our finances, that's one of the benefits of this outside of this. You've got an auditor, you've got Robert Haff team, and you have Greg Isley staying, starting to stay. So you got three sets of business that are us reviewing your financing. So you got to develop a systems approach to make sure that everything's of a whole off an addition without fair.
Because we don't, there's a lot that's to be caught up in, correct.
Very good.
So I'm glad we have multiple sets of eyes looking at it. Anytime I think you're going back multiple measures, it's extremely difficult to do the, you know, to do it, and, you know, in any measure, so that we have multiple eyes looking at it.
This is not an excuse for, I mean, it's a mild explanation. The requirements for audits have gotten a lot more substantial. Your audit firm can't do some of the work they used to be able to do the untested defendants for. There are a lot more rules than there used to be, and towns across the state are getting behind on the audit. Like I said, that's not an excuse, but there's probably a hundred towns, four, five, a union citizens that are behind on that audit. We're all right, it's about the physical act of audit, and that's the work. But that's, that means we do everything, we can't say on top of our, our part, because there is a shortage of orders, we don't think we can be adding that.
Can you take action on this?
No.
Yes. You're approving?
Oh, you need approval, okay.
I'm making motion, we approve the amended contract with Sharp Patel.
Second. Got a motion, second. Need further discussion and comment. And now the motion vote, all those who favor say aye.
All right.
All those who vote aye side. Now motion here. There are more than you need. There was a
six point one, probably.
And, and how you doing? Doing great? We've got ten people here tonight. Yeah, we've been working with, with my bank, calling, I don't know. Been working with Jennifer on, on the bank building, and for the, we've got a great facility there. Down, down building, bay of building back that used to that great. And what we provided is a proposal to work with the town to understand the spaces that are needed, the department, you know, how many offices, I mean, kind of things, whether it's an elevator, a pad, but work with the town and figure out space that everybody needs, and then face layout. Then it's approved through the department, the town. We have a plumbing mechanic or electrical engineer on board to evaluate the system. I understand that they're, all that they're good, but we're gonna have, and you're gonna look at them, and then we we have a cost estimator on board that would look at the design, and provide the instrument, even if you can provide cost estimates, then you'd be in a position to, you know, send it sort of words about how, what we're gonna do. You have actually planned cost estimates and be in a position to, to, or not. So that's really the components that then presented. We call it a pre-designed base, and sets, sets you up to improve a project that either go out to the RFP, the designer, the department set. So this is just a pre-designed proposal to get, get it more manageable and understandable, but pretty simple, straightforward.
And this is going to apply to the next the sixth form. Is that, I think both of these things work well, and I'd be, even the public works, we can't got to yet. It's something we've needed for a while. But at the same time, we must ensure that it's something that we need to tackle right now. And the reason I'm saying that is we have so many things on our plate. Those things being, so we've got the water meter project coming up. We got a stormwater project coming up. You know, doing with the sewer project down there, which that's an ongoing thing. We got the Wiltzbee project going on, everything's associated with that. And we have Ross still working on our mask plants. And not saying do away with these, but my thought is, why can't we push them off a couple of months before we start handling this? We just got through talking about the budget, and, and I think about the money, we don't have anybody, we don't have a full staff of finance to help go through some of this. And we'll be asking our staff to take time away from these other projects that are already in the hopper. And I just get to thinking about it, we got so many things started, and we hadn't finished anything, or any close to get finished. It'll be probably all, take a step back, take a deep breath, and say, okay, let's finish something. Probably right now, in my mind, probably one of the most important things to do is our wastewater plant, and working on our mortaring, being able to move forward with that, so we have to deal with other housing, and some other things there. But I would, I would say, just for taking this, put it on the back burner for now, not do away with it. I think it's a valid project, both of them are, it's something that we need to do. I just don't think we need to allot our resources to those two projects right now, and concentrate on doing some of the others that we've already started on, and put some analysis to it, especially the storm, well, stormwater project comes, the sewer project. That's, that's where, that's got a whole lot of things to go above, as far as overall due to the town. That's just my thought, and it's a foundation.
Yeah, I agree with that. Yeah, I, I understand, I, I think, though, one of the things that we need to be really cognizant of is that, you know, I think the, this, this kind of work, we need to, we need to know what we're up against, and spending the money for, for Mr. Hobbs and his, and his staff to go through both of these projects, I think, is, is the important thing, because we need to be able to plan out what that's gonna look like, and, you know, we need, we need to have a, a law, a larger and more comprehensive building plan, capital improvement plan, I think this, this goes to it, whether, whether we, I think we, getting this preliminary work done now is important, because as we go into the budget process, it gives us an idea of, you know, do, do we need to spend that money right now, or is that, is that construction work that we need to do later on? But I do think that, that we need to, to get the preliminary work done, so we know what we're facing, rather than just sit on them to build it.
Mr. Man, is Mr. Hobbs' group doing this work gonna be detrimental to our other contractors and our staff working on the other projects that they have? Because my understanding is Mr. Hobbs is doing it, that's for it. And it's not something that's gonna be involved in a lot of staff, I'm, we're hiring this group, Hobbs seems to do this work. And then we'll have a, we'll have an idea of what it'll take to finish out this building.
That's correct. It, it, it will lead you to the design process, and you choose to bid it out at the time that the commission is available. It follows the financial piece, you do a budget on a yearly basis, so what, you wait a couple months, or one of those. We don't need to say anybody.
I still like to get a handle on what, looking at, because we don't know.
This could be, you know, a project that's gonna take a year, it's gonna take two years, it could be something we need to, you know, we need to sort of make the best use of now, and we know that as we get this preliminary work done.
Keep, keep in mind too, that the twenty five budget, we're joint to the twenty four budget now, will probably be personnel heavy, all the delays we put in positions. So there's a really possibility that we're out of office space in this building. So the deed for part of the bank, they renovated, isn't just something that we can put into the heat of day, but we need the space that, or they need the space July one, or close to it.
Well, we've actually needed the space for a while, that's why we renovated the building as it is.
Right.
And we're at the, if we don't do something, we're gonna be at the end of the the usage of the building.
Well, we ended, we, we're worse, we ended up having to rent office space.
Right, we're a place, but we have to add positions, and that's what's put, for worse. And our staff will go with that.
Well, I know it's not a wrong move, I would say it's coming out of the phone balance. I don't know what we're gonna do later down. Well, I understand what you're saying, but.
Yeah, I would say if I'm, can't wait through three months to decide, and that's not gonna make that much difference one way or the other.
Well, but it's not, it's not gonna change our, as, as you said, it's not gonna change our financial position. We still have to think about the fund balance, whether we do it now or tomorrow.
I'm not talking about fund balance, I'm talking about this concentrating some of the others that we've already got in the hopper, and, and put some analysis to it. The storm, uh, stormwater thing is the last poor thing we got. It's not, you know, they've not even done it, we've had something else on top.
Is this gonna be adverse to any of those existing? Is this going to be adverse to any of those existing projects, including the stormwater issue? I'm making a motion when we approve the contract with how it's architects of pre-designed services. So the Roy Street building for twenty one, two fifteen.
I've got a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion about that?
I think so. To me, I think, because we have, we're ahead of, behind.
One thing I might add is. This is the aim of exactly what you're talking about. It's just trying to get it in a form where you have a construction budget estimate. Planning. That that's all that, that's all, that's the main goal of this. It doesn't mean. Made the project, just trying to get you.
Knowledge.
Knowledge to say this is the X amount, X dollar project for.
So we can make an informed decision.
That's what.
And your work's not going to affect any other projects we have going on, correct?
No, I think we have one or two staff meetings. For an hour, maybe two hours. I could, we can do the rest.
See, that's one of the bonus, we're going to. Our staff still don't have to go through the advice. So they can be working on it. Maybe it's just a couple of hours, but. Yeah, it's going to probably involve more than that. That's my problem about this. Just work on something that is family or wastewater. There's all kinds of things that need to be done with it. Plus, we've got this groundwater thing coming up. We'll be working on that. That's just, that's my perspective for it.
We we have outside help with all those other projects too, correct?
That's right. And it's, and it's a different team of people too. I mean, the wastewater plant is very involved. Obviously, I mean, the team, our affiliates director, the wastewater superintendent. The haziness order, like, this is a public building project. This is part of the works. And it's going to involve the departments. But it's actually finding the element or spread. So it's, it's not the same as that.
Not those departments also short-staffed also. Like, is Parks and Rec short-staffed?
They are. They're down there. They're down too.
They're not the only ones that's. Low on personnel crew. Other worlds.
Financial, well. But are we putting this together or is Hobbs putting it together?
Hobbs putting this together.
You'll get a, you'll get a written before, plans. All that's good and space program and what going on.
I I guess what I'm following, I don't see how this probably first might or not, how that's going to change the foundation of the project. The wheel is getting there already. I mean, we're talking back to the tour room.
I'm assuming the focus on wastewater. That needs to be, that needs to be done. Yeah, but but for a lot of different reasons, as someone we talked about today. That needs to be done. There's, there's other things that are involved, not just the plant itself. You know, about the testing, the tanks, quality, all that stuff. And something, it's been going on for a while. We haven't gotten to. We haven't gotten to a point where we have a. Resolution on any of that stuff. It's just still all sort of hanging out there. So and that's what I'm going to want to tell the folks. And it's always been, in my estimation, you can get too many things going on at one time. And I think that's where we are, is we can't get too many things going on where we can't. Fully concentrate or. Direct our efforts to exactly where these people have to get started. We've got stop and go. And she's got stop over here or something. Whether that be public works, whether that be finance, whether that be personnel or something. There's always something else going on. And I'm saying, not saying not do it, not saying that at all. Put the brakes on it. Get a, get some of this under control. At least have a better idea. Revisit it and move on.
In 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 my mind, and and I, and I certainly understand that. I think that, given the fact that Mr. Hobbs and his team are going to be doing probably ninety five percent of the work here. With very, without, you know, much, you know, attention needed from the town staff. This helps, gives us much more information, allows us for for a longer period of budgeting. To 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 look at these projects. So it, and it's not, and and in my mind, since it's not affecting, you know, a lot of these other incredibly important issues like wastewater, stormwater. I I think this is a recommend to allow him to do, and he can do his professional work.
And I don't think it's going to affect our priorities. I know it won't affect our priorities. And given that we're trying to move to a twenty four. A twelve-month budgeting cycle where we're just working on every single day, I think getting the extension sooner rather than later. Be helpful on going in the budgeting process.
I think we have a motion in a second. And then, and then just can. Anyway.
It's just going to. Even if, if we say two months. Down the road. And what if we're sealed in the same situation, I'm going to ask for another two. So, you know, just thinking about. Time. And I'll still going to be doing your demands with that.
Because. And to to your point, Commissioner, though, our. List of things that we're working on, strategic priorities. Those are going to take years to do. They're not going to be done in a day or a month or two months. So we're going to be coming back here in two months, same situation. So I think we just move forward and get the information we need. So that we can be prepared. Because this building is reaching its capacity and we're going to have to do something. We've known that since we first had architectural designs years ago. With a potential skywalk to a new building next door. We're very fortunate not to. Get the bank building downtown. It's going to save us millions and millions of dollars. The estimate on the new bill, it was fifteen million. This is a whole lot less. So I'm for going, moving forward with it. Figuring out how much it's going to cost on contract and. Fix it up.
Any other questions, Tom? Well, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Not hearing anything else. Please to vote. All those in favor of this motion, six thousand five hundred and ten.
All right.
All those opposed, like sign. You get that, I can't see, but then. If you're opposed, just raise your hand. You got it.
Can you, can you do the, the four? Have them raise their hands please, Mayor? Thank you.
Need to do that on the second.
Yeah, I think it's six point one.
Yeah.
No, but we just approved the contract, we didn't approve it.
Oh.
But number seven, three. Didn't make a motion to have a contract. So I'll make a motion approving the. Twenty point, twenty twenty four point two. Or then submitting the, the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four this project.
Second.
We have a motion, second. This is about there. And all those in favor, uh, signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, black sign.
If he doesn't, if you don't vote, we count it as high, is that correct?
If you do not vote it, I will count it for the motion.
I'll make a motion when we approve the budget. Ordinants. For the capital project for the Royal Street building.
Second. No, we did, we did the, we, but we like that ordinance. There's three, there's three different notions. Yeah.
All right, I've got a motion in the second, any discussion? Comment. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. All of those opposed, black sign. You got that?
It's really the same, same idea. This is probably be a new build. So, so generally the same, it's actually be a new build. We have a site designer on in the proposal as well to. Do a site master plan in terms of. Working with building regulations, particular regulations, federal regulations, parking. Back plan and all of those, the junk for outbuildings. The partners are involved. We did, we worked out with you similar to what we brought out on the bank. Space programming for how for the building itself, they're going to be added. So the site design. It would be site involved, obviously, it is not site involved in that. So generally the same, same idea that says for a kind of renovation, it's a new build, new site design. And then again, you end up with a document that. Does the same thing as something for you to use for planning. And give you the fault, professional fault detector involved, the estimate for the fault of construction. She can use for her future development. So the same, different, different pile of issues.
Make a motion when we approve the contract with Hobbs for pre-design of the new public works headquarters.
Second.
Well, good. Got a motion in the second. Any discussion? At same reservations as I spoke earlier about that, it was, it was parallel. The other discussion. You didn't go to vote. All those in favor, just go to signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, like sign. You got that?
Make a motion when we approve the twenty point three, twenty twenty four. Budget amendment twenty twenty four point one. To remember the funds from fund balance.
Second.
All right, we go. Motion, second, any discussion, comment? And now we're going to vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands please. All those opposed, like sign. You got that? Thank you.
I'll make a motion when we approve the project budget ordinance for public works facility in a second.
Motion in a second, comment, discussion. And now all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, like sign. You got that? Next. Manager before.
Yeah.
Six minutes. All of our, that's. You know, it's time.
Put it back in the bag. I think seven, five, seven, six. Surprise you. Surprise you a narrative of what we're trying to do, but the official label we don't want to do. You got colored fourth card on page seventy six of the presentation. With the partnership of finance directors. And also our good finance directors. I think now is a good time to go ahead and make the restructuring changes. That I intended to propose for F five twenty five. So this would have been the plan for twenty five, but it was changed. I think now we're going to put it on it. Big piece is making sure that we have additional segregation duties that we've talked about. That duty exists. Separating out accounts pay with payroll as one jobs from Parkinson. That there is critical. Grant administration is critically important. If the mayor is on the property, we're acting in the pipeline right now. Making sure that we're actually managing the grant fund and all of the benefits reporting. And I think that's been the most free over loan cash finance. I would prefer to move that to the management. I think that even gets more hands-on finishing. Going that direction. From a customer service building standpoint, I think a big factor of why we found ourselves in the position that we did with twenty one fiscal year at the office. There's too much crossover in responsibilities of customer service from accounting. And those are two very different roles. And I think we need to more clearly delineate their responsibilities. Accounting staff needs to be well versed, trained and able to do customer service work. But as much as possible, customer service reps need to be trained as a supplement and operate. That, but being a small town, that's typical for lines to get blurred. Also don't have adequate segregation duties for the small town. We had an eight million dollar budget just years ago. You're you're operating by just twenty million dollars. That I had in the sense of days. Having additional staff, make sure you have an adequate check about what. The, I think the finance director will go away. And that's because of pretty classified as anybody. It's the same duties, it's the responsibilities that we took before. That would also allow for more cross-training. We talked about such a thing, broad training quite a bit. Having two finance analysts would allow crossover. So someone who knows A P payroll knows how to do the first thing and vice versa. Same thing with grants, they bring divisions all within the same neighborhood. So we have that additional training. As far as the feeling of a perfect manager, that would be a new position. I feel like that's needed because that takes a lot of time away from finance staff and finance director. Making sure there's a coordination for who's out for lunch, who's out sick, who's, you know, who's filling, who is top of the system. And also making sure they're on contact and manage those things. And ideally, it is for a billing manager. I found other channels that go through the metering process like we all. Go to this like the, all the data sophistication involved and and kind of the automated system. And it just creates more accountability. We're going to have people out that's one of the challenges that we face every day. But the department decides that it is, we have to pull people from. Public Works Administration or H R all to join if somebody's outside. In a period of their ability to fully grow. We like finance to be self-damned by this government. And without, in every, the government. Other people shall. Another big question, how are we going to pay for it? Well, we have a surplus that we budgeted from the Freddie bond. So we believe that this will be able to be addressed without going into fund balance. By using those product dollars.
The outside helping.
Yes, sir.
If you have everything that is swirling on, it just be necessary.
Yes, I, I think there are two different issues. I think this is the structure that you need to make sure that you don't end up in that place. And I think if you don't have it, you will. Because you won't have adequate personnel in place to prevent it.
So this could be a future cost savings then.
It is a maybe now or maybe later situation. If you don't pay for the personnel front, if you're going to pay a contractor that a much higher level of grade, the bunch of paid personnel fixes. And obviously jeopardize all the projects. And and I can tell you, just from currently we've had in that department, that you're not going to retain employees with with workloads like that now. So it will be a revolting.
Which presents training issues.
Absolutely. When you're down now, so you're most experienced version of finance department, or the demo area.
Do you think this will, so we have the money allocated to this, so leaving uh there's future problems and prevent the past problems?
I do, I do, I mean, we're, every year we're going to have to look at what the adequate staffing is, but finance. We don't have a problem of overstaffing, that's actually, that's not a problem, but finances is a department that's critically important, causing effects every other department in your organization. Every department spends money, every, every department is involved in, in their daily activities, incurred expenses. Um if we don't have an adequate staff finance department, that interferes with public work, the parts of our police, the buyer, being able to add it if they're not.
There are, how many people you, you proposing to add to the finance department to?
Well, you're moving one out. Where it's, it's reclass, something like, where it's reclassified on, it's a finance director as a budget analyst. It's creating a fi, a, an additional finance analyst position and creating the utility billing and customer service.
So we are on the add two more people.
Yes, sir.
Great memory, come on. I think, it was six months ago, I think January, something like that. That we heard this same thing, that we needed two more, that we needed to add two more positions, finance. To solve some of the issues that we had or something like that, which we did, if I remember correctly. And what you could do. So here today, six, seven months later. Finers, it's, it's, we're in the same position where we're asking for two more. And uh as of Friday, I think the city career come wrong with, as of Friday. The highest ranking person in finance department would have been there, just to be that Chris, right? Our finance director is, uh she's been doing a job, she's a assistant finance director. Gone. Uh a lot of our customer service people are gone, out of the building there. And there's definitely a problem here, some work. There's a problem. And my gut tells me it's a personnel problem. Somewhere in those, there's one of all these people leaving. And it's not only just in finance, but you've got the same thing in parts and ready. Something's just not right. And I don't, my thought is, not going to have anybody that's got any experience whatsoever as a private. We got a little bit now. But anyway, we don't want to hire anybody between now and Friday to get a change. There are all these new people that really won't know anything about our old position or how it's going to be to do. And they could have some, you know, uh training, hopefully. But the thing that concerns me the most is that I think there is some type of personnel. And based on what the work employees are telling, current employees are telling, different things. The folks that we have just do not feel comfortable talking to the people that are in charge. They don't, they don't feel like that they can come to the supervisor or whoever's in charge of it and tell them concerns that they have without some form of reprisal. And if you look at it in the finance department, this, we, we don't have one at this point, there's got to be something going on. And if we're going to, we're going to talk about totally restad of the finance department. I'm not really thrilled about doing that until we put something in place where there's some type of third independent third party or something, when somebody has like an agent interview or something like that, where they can talk to, feel like they can talk to that person without fear of any kind of reprisal. So we can really find out what's going on. Now, I remember we done some consultant work here in the last year. And consultants came back, and one of the things they came up with, yeah, there's more X. And this was about inventory. And at that point, we said, okay, all right, we recognize that we got something going on. We sort of tabled that at that point, till we could get to the budget. And we also said, we'll come back to that and have some specific meetings, uh just about that topic. Well, we never did get to that part, and that's on us. But now, since we hadn't done that, here we are in the pit that we're in without a finance department. Potentially, we don't have a finance department. And always be well and good, just until we, uh, address whatever this issue, first of all, whatever this issue is. It's just going to be like you said, a revolving bill, if they're not going to stay, you can come in there and try to take out. Because we've not really addressed the problem, or the issue on this sort of problem. So I mean, I just, I'm just not excited. And I know we're going to, we're going to have to do something, but let me ask this question. What are we going to do in the meantime, until say this Friday, we're down to one person, and whenever we get somebody, what, what is the procedure going to look like? What is the finance department going to look like? Who's going to do what? Going to layers?
I've known for a month that we're going to have this situation, so I can add the measures, make sure it's not a problem. We have Greg Isling's team, have someone coming in, helping us out today, starting today. They also have someone assisting payroll, another person assisting all the day, we do. So that's three people, plus your two broader half people, and you still have two experienced people in finance department. You also had a customer service rep start today. There's not a shortage of staff in this interim period. And we had someone start with that, so there was a transition period, playing out the one finance director and an interim finance director. So we're not going to be down, where we're not going to have people who can operate our finance department, we're not letting that happen.
People, I'm not worried about the experience that they're going to have. And they're going to grains ago, but they're here, I mean, you can take the smarter person in the world somewhere else. But your organization, they're, they might know the basics, but they're not going to know exactly all the ins and outs. What is and everything, how your organization runs, because there'll be a transition period, there are some amount of time.
And, and, yeah, and, and I, I totally understand that, I think that, um, from, you know, we, we see that every day in, in private enterprise. I mean, you know, bringing in, when, when you start new people, you have, there is a third transition period, but you're, you're hiring experienced people, I think Mr. Isley's team is, is very experienced, while they, correct, they don't know, they're not in solid city. But they're very experienced in the operation of municipal finance. So I, I, it's, yes, they don't know solid city, but they know finance. I, I think you're going to, anytime you hire people, you're going to, you're going to have that transition period. Um, yeah, I, it, it does concern me that, you know, that, um, we have, you know, and we do need to, to, um, go back through and look at that. Um, I, my concern is if we don't make this, that, that make this decision, that we get into the, get into the point where we don't have, where we don't have the segregation of duties. And in the future, or if we get dinged for that, and we get, and we get back in a situation where we're behind and we cannot do that. I think that, um, this is, and, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, when, when we did the, when we did the budget for the twenty-three year, we had, there were requests for, for positions across town, and we said no, because we had to take care of other outstanding issues, is that correct?
Correct.
And so we, we kind of in some way done this to ourselves, because it, it, nobody's fault, it's just we had to make priority, prioritization decisions and, and the prioritization decisions didn't include adding staff. Now we're in a position where I think we have to add staff that were to, you know, to deal with the budget, you know, twenty million dollar budget up from eight million, when I think that first started here. So we're, we're getting bigger and we're going to have to, we're going to continue to grow.
And I think a further delineation of duties can only help to improve morale. And when we did do that study, and we were all individually interviewed, and we did come back multiple times on it. The, the main component of the morale issue was money, payment. Um, so, yes, there is also morale issue when you're overloading your staff and they're working non-stop, which I think this will help address that, because we'll better delineate the duties. Uh but ultimately, a lot of our problems come down to, pull into the survey we had done, I think what we all inherently know, a lot of it comes down to payment. We're competing against Greensboro, Sanford, Randolph, Wake and Southern County, just, you know, very short driving distance.
Yeah, we're also going to increase income or paying student, these other employees, but yeah, they're skill lead, so there's something underlying the task.
When, when, when we increased.
You don't agree?
I don't agree.
When we.
Why you said it?
Uh, I would not answer that with those, but but I would have to just give you that.
When, when we increased our, we went up seven percent on our column, correct? What did Pittsburgh do?
They did, they did six percent and also added a roof of mental health, um, so I would take.
And what did the county, what did the county do?
Seven percent plus forty, four hundred dollars, so we just got further behind.
How long do you anticipate? I'm going to start with name on both.
I think Mr. Isling's team will be here until we get staffed in the finance department. And I think the key there is finding the next finance director. I do not think it will take very long to get, based on, you know, moves we've already been talking about, to get staffed in the other position, but I think that will happen very quickly. It will often depend on how long it takes to develop a finance director.
If you want a finance director to hire, there's your own team. That's, that's a good thing.
Well, I would like a further delineation of duties, I would, I think it would help with. I know if I was working, I want to know what mom's supposed to be doing. And I don't want necessarily to be pulled in a hundred different directions, so I think it would come around that point. And I definitely don't want to end up two budget cycles behind, and go back and redo work from three years ago. I definitely don't want to do that, again, nor do I want to expend the cost for him. So if this can help prevent that, then I'd be for it.
If you were to, or other organizations our size. This structure is, is rather typical, and if anything, there's more positions of finance than what the poster. It's just that solid city's been very likely game to that, by it.
What other towns have a similar setup to what you're proposing?
In Dunn, Midfield, Hillverde. Um, yeah, I've probably looked at other towns like that. Um that's pretty good here, really. Uh, but, but it does depend on what we offer, I mean, for example, like, but they're in customer service managers. And part of that is, is coordinating with the L P A, how many other towns operate like this way? That's an additional unique service that we offer, that we have for them. Uh, other towns don't have the medium system that we're going to. Uh, we, you know, we're already evaluating whether the meter or your position ultimately needs to respond, or report to this billing manager, because that's typical of me that go to the system and go on so long, or public work position, it's more of a finance position, because of the real-time reading process. Um, if we did that down the road, and that's installed, then I, if that would not require additional staff. But I also think you need someone who has the technical ability to manage that. Um, you're not going to completely stop a revolving door finance professionals today. I mean, that's, unfortunately, that's one of the most in-demand field grids, and it's still to transferable from public to profit sector, or another area to go off. And even though we've done a lot to address pay, our compliment, when we do a compensation classification study again, it's going to have moved substantially. And we're going to, we're going to make more adjustments for it more. So I know, I know we did a lot of seven percent, and it was helpful. Uh, but it's not just that, it also was the workload, um, isn't paying competitive, but also is the work assigned appropriate for the skill level. And I think we found ourselves in this position, in large part because work was assigned to employees beyond the skill level that they could perform. Which is going to be demoralizing, and it's going to affect morale, and pay is always going to be an issue. And it's not a unique problem, there are many towns experiencing that.
These employees, you were talking about them, demoralized, did they, did they talk to anybody about this, they fertilized this to anybody, how, how are you aware? I don't think that's a good answer. He talked to anybody? Yes. Well, I still believe there's, there is an issue. And we talk about pay, I don't, it was over last town. Uh, the reason that I've done, so I always comes, conclude that money is an issue, but it is not the issue. Because job satisfaction, all that can go a long way. Because if somebody, they're not happy where they're doing, he's throwing all the money, you won't do it, then I won't, then I won't stay anywhere. But I still think we have a morale problem, it's not being addressed, it needs to be addressed. And I think it needs to be addressed before we embark on this adding more people, I think we're going to find ourselves right back in this same position some months down the road.
I don't think it's necessarily that we're, yes, we are adding people, but we're also restructuring to address the morale issue. So we can better delineate their jobs and hopefully take some work off of them. Uh, which would should improve the morale. So I'll make a motion, we approve the pos restructure, the finance and budget departments.
With the additional positions and revised salary increases.
Second. All right, you got a motion, you got a second. Any further discussion, comments? Into the vote? All right. All those in favor of this, raise your hand. All those opposed like sign. Got that? Yeah. Man.
We discussed a few months back about having a, uh special goal for this upcoming year, doing something to you. So a common condition is everything we ask by doing a presentation assumption, but not having a big delay with power over the system in that process. So this is a special goal for FY twenty-three, one.
That, that zoom thing across the top was just like, oh my. There.
And each, each, we, the cloud copy, there's a, available here in comparison. So the hundred hour we're going, it's always helpful to know where you're at. And quickly, I wanted to try to address some of the things that you've accomplished in the past year, and they're working on, because So quickly, I wanted to try to address some of the things that you've accomplished in the past year and been working on because we've got a lot of ironing and ironing policies. So a few things we've done, and this doesn't mean this is going to involve any whiz, it's just some highlights. But we've improved late collection services and refused related resident complaints. That's been something that's been really helpful. Reminding that really improving that piece of streets, uh, working alongside our public works director and his team, um, in doing so, we recruited full screen. That's huge. Biggest economic development project in North Carolina history, and we're negotiating a consent agreement with them. We've worked with town staff to negotiate a special order of consent, of normal by part of the environmental quality. Uh, we've created financial policies and a purchasing manual to enhance accountability we've never had before. We've expanded our consulting services. We've had relationships with good consultants, but we've broadened that. So we have more resources available at the table to give us the expertise that even our town staff doesn't have. So instead of just being yielded withers, we also have Hazen Sawyer, LKC Engineering, Stewart, Freezing Nichols and Sanford Whole Family. All are actively involved in running Solid City today. We've improved our specialization, uh, departments through splitting of public works and utilities as well as the planning and development departments. Uh, we have successfully converted talent communications from Chatham County to Chatham County from Solid City. And then we took the dollars from that savings and put it right back into the police department and invested in the offices that we've had. Uh, this is, we've created our maximum rate from twelve officers down to one. It's been very successful. We've moved services back in house that previously were contracted out. Uh, ordinance enforcement, uh, Mr. Galloway's doing a great job there in the community development department and also our pool operator. Uh, that was a, a big undertaking, um. Tyler has taken a little amount of points there as well as Mr. Arden helping us out and getting our lifeguard staff. Uh, we've completed the town hall renovation contract with Elton's. While we still have work, as you can see in this room, on a separate project, the Elton piece, working with Mr. Potts has been completed. Uh, we amended our prior budget to correct for errors, which all are aware of. Uh, we created the town's first communications and budget manager position. We implemented with the NDO government resources recruitment and application portal system, which will help us improve the application pool that we currently have. We adopted the very comprehensive personnel policy. Uh, we had a, a piece built personnel policy, we've never had something comprehensive, we do now. Uh, we also conducted an employee survey that Mr. Jackson, Gary Jackson, who we've dealt with with, and implemented some concerns that came about from that. So dumping into the strategic plan, uh, the highlight of our strategic plan, as you're aware, is our mission and our vision. When, when we adopted our strategic plan, we did not amend the existing mission and vision itself. Cascading from that, we adopted a strategic plan with five major priorities. Those were to facilitate responsible growth in community, plan and implement sustainable infrastructure, achieve organizational and operational excellence, enhance community engagement and provide a high level of compensation. So quickly here, you see what the goals were. Each of these particular priorities has bullet points that we discussed and agreed to. Um, developing a comprehensive growth strategy, updating land policies, et cetera, uh, building and educating community workforce, uh, implementing the TARPO comprehensive plan and supporting existing local businesses. Well, what to do from there? But here's some action items, and that's what I want to bring you as much, each of these priorities. So these are specific things that we're looking to drive in office during the next year that tie link to each identified strategic priority. So if the actual items, when the strategic priority one, but facilitating responsible growth in community, we want to complete town's first comprehensive plan to landage. We have an old landage plan, but it's never been comprehensive. We're looking to complete the street day plan with the community development department to enhance the publicization. So with me, we have a schematic of what we want to do. And Withers and Ravenell are assisting us with that. We want to continue to work with the Channel Economic Development Corporation and our community college to recruit business. And make sure these folks that are coming to work from a whole speed are adequately trained to prepare for the adulthood of the company. We're investigating options for rewrite of our unified development boards because we know that it's gonna be a major finding of the completion of this comprehensive plan. Is how outdated our UDO is and you how change in the community, what's gonna be needed for growing revitalized communities in Solid City to make sure we have rules and regulations that count for that. We're investigating the main street program, future considerations, something that, which you met has been involved in going to their conferences and learning about it. But I think it's funny, the practice of embarking on participating in the major program and being, uh, in a position where we can receive downtown grant dollars, uh, which is so. Uh, we also want to build on the existing partnerships that we have with full speed in that area. Strategic priority two. Planning and implementing sustainable infrastructure. So the goals that we have already defined, our strategic plan for priority two, instead of wanting to upgrade, expand water and sewer utilities, resolve the law enforcement issues, improve damage and maintenance, implement capital retention, officially report to equitable and fair man. So what are we gonna do about it? Here's some action items, specific things that we want to do. We're investigating with a payment condition survey, the resurancing of town streets. We've never done it. We've been very, we've been our power to fund. And this was an objective way to go through and have a professional tell us what the condition of our streets are, if we actually did something done. We want to begin the Carter Bank renovation, which you approved, redesigned for tonight. Uh, begin with designing construction of a new public works garage. Uh, reviewing the town maintenance plan and contract for the town buildings and grounds. It's the appropriate staffing and style to things like parks and rec, public works, to maintain existing town facilities. Also the contracts that we have, is it time to bring some of these things in house, save to dollar, or change how we allocate those activities and possibilities? One of the things that we're doing. We want to begin the wastewater treatment plan upgrade. We want to complete the water plant upgrade. We're working to improve street maintenance, as mentioned, we're doing a condition survey, and survey is always good with the work that you put into actually paving those streets. Public works is placed to purchase an asphalt after so that that work can be done, not just paving streets, but also improving the condition of the streets through a repair to pipeline. We also were discussing implementing a stormwater utility program. We're going through some community engagements on that. We also want to begin the add that inventory to segments for sewer and for stormwater, which we've already received the grant dollars to do those processes. That will be the very first stormwater AIA performed and be a three-year update on our sewer analysis. Priority three, our goal, uh, are to, are trying to achieve organizational operational excellence. Goals were to enhance productivity by attracting, retaining, developing, following employees, provide competitive salaries and benefits and develop and implement a full recognition system, create and sustain a collaborative organizational culture, foster creativity, fully evolve the physical responsibility, and develop succession plans enabling maternal promotion in management and technical position. That's what the board agreed to. But here's our action. We're gonna conduct a new compensation classification study for all institutions. This has gotten begun in today's environment. If not, you're gonna continue to lose employees. It was just a necessity there. We need to review our benefits package offered to all employees. Uh, we're gonna need some work at restructuring works and utilities due to the growth in the department as well as planned retirements that we know will happen during this fiscal year. Uh, restructuring finance department, instead of getting grants, purchasing, AP payroll, you approve that tonight. We're gonna need to recruit a new finance director. We're looking to conduct the town's first employee involved day. So that is asking the employees, allowing them to participate in going around the public departments and experiencing what other employees do to improve that morale issue, to improve that collaboration, add a better understanding of what we do within Solid City organization. We're looking to continue providing our newsletter offering to town employees. So we've had a couple additions of that. And our communication specialists have been hard at work providing that and making that a better process for us. So our employees are engaged. So one of the findings of our employee surveys, further down the line, employees were the more disconnected they felt from expectation. So this is an action item we take and try and regain our employees and make them aware of what going on in Solid City. We're looking to build training and development programs for all employees. So that they're ready to take that next step when it becomes available to them, uh, within the organization. We also need to create a capital improvement plan for personnel, uh, code in FY twenty five. First, that's gonna be personnel having to bring additional positions. But as you know, that will be limited, we can't add every position that wants. So what is the appropriate sequencing for additional position? We're in the cove with the plan for that. And also we're working to create a new safety manager. The safety manager we have is twenty years old. In many ways, it's outdated. Uh, we're gonna improve that process as well. Strategic priority four is to enhance community engagement. We had four goals, board guidance. Building public confidence in clubs, embracing the community, promoting quality of life, investing in parks of recreation, and to provide equal community forums to inform, increase citizens' participation. We've got several bullet points stacked up on this. Complete the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Uh, that's well under our lake with both of them, Ravenell. We're hosting a community engagement meeting in each position in Pinker. Uh, that's five meetings through the state year. We've had three so far. So our next meeting will be in District Four, which is very fertile in Hages District. Uh, we will begin the accreditation process for parks, recreation and public works. So that's a significant undertaking, probably a three-year cycle. The smaller you are, the better off you are in undertaking that. That's a huge thing to undertake. Uh, each, um, challenge, but I think it's necessary. If you're gonna grow and be the community that we're expected to be in the next few years, we need to make sure that we're establishing present practices today, instead of waiting till we get larger and having to back them through. We've got new staff, new expertise, new skills. This is an opportunity to refresh that. Creating a new utility billing policy. We know that where some of these things are outdated. We want to comprehensively address all of our utility billing challenges at one time, instead of piece by piece. Creating an advisory board policy. We're raising the role of Paul, we're gonna circle back here soon with a, with a new advisory board policy. We currently do not have one. Uh, create a citizens academy. In, in conjunction with the advisory board policy, most communities you see operate citizens academy, an opportunity for residents of Solid City to learn more about what their local government does, what departments it offers, what services it offers, and how they can find ways to engage and learn about the town. Uh, it's also an excellent recruiting tool for your advisor. An individual's having an opportunity to learn about how the town operates and functions. They all find interest in participating in one of their local advisory lives. We're also looking to lead the business owners to attend events throughout the year. Uh, we're working to align our town budget with best practices from the Government Finance Association. That's something, that's something the budget manager is on, are working on, and we're working towards building a budget process. In October, when we start installing our new integrating software and our new moves. That's finally getting underway. It's for the library, the library, it's not the town that we're doing, and we're ready to kick that off. And then priority five, uh, the goals adopted by the board. Welcome off employees and reverse your visits to visitors, build the police department of the future, and potentially seek to improve service delivery. And then our final slide, plan for the second fire station. Recruit, retain employees in the police department. But also even improve security at town hall and courtroom. Now that we have court back here at town hall. Um, security management is going to be added to the taking as all public buildings, uh, into today's style. And also we need to recruit the next police chief. So. As we've all discussed tonight, the challenges, the problems, we've got, we've got a lot going on in Solid City. We've got a lot that we want to take. Um, but we're gonna get it done.
So I've got a question for you. Uh, last day, we said we recruit the next police chief. You still hope that we need a manager?
So I think, I think, I think that's a good question. I think that's probably something we need to discuss in the next budget cycle, uh, for FY twenty five. And also probably depending on where we all group the process for the next chief, what their vision is for the venture department. So I'm not, I'm not saying something we don't need. I just think that's a big decision for us to make for the next chief and project that scope. And I think it's something we need to probably have on our radar.
Well, I'm just saying, we don't have a succession plan. We have somebody. We can depend on. Or something happened around Chief Wagner. Beyond his control. Could be nice after the mic stepped in, even if it's just in or.
Well, we have two events. Well, if Iowa's a beck and ready, it's their experience and and ability.
I'm gonna pass that to you, sir. I think we need a manager.
I agree that Chief Wagner's the partner. And hopefully he will get everything squared away before he retires. Yeah, we get the other, well, I'll just see if it costs. Next, what, three years, four years? Will we get three officers per year? That hasn't been filled since he was promised two years.
So, um, and I, I think these, these are action, uh, action items are good, um, but these aren't goals. Um, when I look at a goal, what we need to, what we need to do is, I think we need to be a little more specific in what these action items are. We need to, you know, once I, I was looking at it is, I think, I mean, and I, I think, I think it's the right thing to do. I just want to, you know, as I look at it is, you know, um, how we, you know, when we look at, um, and putting on notes here, um, you know, ah, there we go. Um, how do we know we see, you know, we can, the, the goal, the goal, the action item was built upon existing partnerships with Mount Animal Speed. How do you measure that? How do you, how do we, I want to, you know, how do, what do you know? How do you know we've succeeded and you've achieved that goal? Uh, I, I, I mean, some of these are false, I did not, I think, actually. Yeah, I think, I think, but from a, from a, we're gonna call them goals. I think they need to be. You, you need to be able to measure them because if, if you can't measure it, you can't measure it.
Have anyone checked with surrounding municipalities and see how they evaluate town? What they do.
Well, do I, I didn't hear that.
I said, anyone contact other municipalities, surrounding areas, how they evaluate their town managers?
Eddie?
No, but I'm happy to do that. I mean, I have information already of things that's come across the list, sir. I know they use evaluation. And I have some of those for them. I'm happy to, um, share those and gather information.
So I was curious, you know, let me have an example to look at.
Yeah, but I, but I think, I think it's, it's mostly, it's very goal related and that's when I, when I look at goals, I look at, you know, the, how do we know we succeed? How do we know we've overachieved? Because we don't put some specifics in there that, um, and, but I think this is, this is a really, really good start. Um, but I think we need to, we need to get a little bit more specific is so that we can say, yes, we succeeded or no, we didn't.
Nancy, if you've got something that will help with that process of developing goals, evaluating them, that other municipalities use, that'd be great because I think we all agreed that, you know, what we were currently doing wasn't really working.
Oh, yeah.
But I, this is, uh, I think this is the most, what do you call it, action items or goals? And I know some are unmeasurable and others. I think this is the, the most we've seen from any
Anytime.
Town manager we've had. And, uh, very lofty, I think, uh, a lot to achieve and looking forward to seeing, seeing that push come to achievement.
You know what? I need the measurement.
That's right. When I used to, when I used to swim, we used to set goals. Of course, time is very measurable. Um, and we would always set goals that were pretty far out there that we didn't know if we could get. But at the end of the day, if we got close, we were happy to.
Yeah, I worked in, I worked in self operations and it's, it's for the forecasting accuracy because bookings attainment, it's revenue attainment and things like that. So I, that, I, that's why I'm, I'm a metrics kind of person.
Ready on to the next. Partner reports those in the yellow bag and anything they change. And attorney? I can all tell the clothes today. Oh, okay. I always count you, you are. Uh, good on the body. And then I hear motion is going to close set. I think most are going to close session, should North Carolina State Stat 143 reach and level eight at three. You have a motion to the second, I'll load the paper and say aye.